Barnes, Gorman.
Here.
U.S.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Maple.
Present.
Field.
Yes.
Tomcheck.
Yes.
Zero. Yes. Student rep Carly.
Here.
Item three, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four is the approval of the agenda with what I would like to do is move up the student board report to right after approval, after the public forum.
I have a motion again.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mark Cubus, is there a second?
A second.
And a second by Mike Kaiser, further discussion. Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, approval of the minutes.
Also move.
To approve all three sets. Okay, so.
Hoga.
We do have a motion on the floor right now to approve all three sets of minutes, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Mark, discussion.
On Tuesday, September 18, under discussion on possible decision in cell phone policy, it says motion might be able to contain the climate and culture survey for the next three years to capture data. I don't know if we're saying three years.
I think there was, there was a correctional by Corey about that it already is currently contracted. That's why I was, I wasn't aware of that, thought I was president of the council, but I wasn't aware of that, that's why I initially made that motion.
Better just remember you're saying three years, though, you're gonna wait three years.
No, no, every, for the next three years.
For the next three, three consecutive years, that was the test of that assumption.
So are you okay with?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, any other further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item six, public forum, the public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. At this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Yes, please, go ahead.
My name is Mary Silerritker, I live at 2173 22 County Road B, Mosne. I am here regarding the support staff compensation schedule. On September 21, 2018, I sent a letter to Jessica Maple, Personnel Committee Chairperson, and Diane Gorman, Mosne School Board President. In this letter, I addressed my placement on the support staff compensation schedule and the meeting I had with Dr. Schultz, along with other information. I have been the middle school administrative assistant for seven years and was placed on the entry level, tier 1A of this schedule, right along with the newly hired administrative assistants at the high school and elementary school. From March 22, 2018, to this present date, I have had several conversations with, and meetings with Mr. Sween, Mrs. Yernerdell, and Dr. Schultz regarding my placement. This past May, I met one-on-one with Dr. Schultz when I asked her who was on the support staff compensation committee, she was unable or chose not to tell me who the members were, which I found amazingly strange. Also, during that meeting, I was told repeatedly that my years of service meant nothing and that this is just how it works. I truly believe if any employee was ever told this, their years of service did not mean anything from their superior, they would feel totally empty and have no self-esteem left within them. My hope is you, the Mosne School Board, when reviewing the place, reviewing the placements of your employees on this compensation schedule, also be reminded of the value of longstanding, hardworking, and dedicated employees you currently have working for you right now. Thank you for listening and your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and then we can look at that for a future agenda item, possibly. Moving on.
I'd like to speak with. I choose to speak this time because I'm concerned about the ability of a sitting board member to get an item placed on the agenda, as evident in my request for information about Mr. Zimmerman and his compensation. I report for the whole board's listening pleasure and for the minutes of this meeting that I received, I was stonewalled, I did not get the information that I had asked for, I had to go so far as to make an open record request. This was a direct violation of the policy, number 143, which conveniently was tonight on the agenda for removal from the board policies. I would warn the school board, be careful what you change in your board policies, they are there to protect you and protect the rights of the school board members. I do not know why Chair Gorman or Brent Zimmerman wished to stonewall my request for information. It makes one wonder what they're trying to hide or what they're trying to keep in the dark, so to speak. As I contemplated that, I thought, what do they have in common? Here we have the school board president, who is also employee of the bus garage, and purchasing director, our financial director, two people directly involved in the bus contract. Now I may just be reaching, but why hide information, why not be open? I would caution this board in changing its policies. I'll leave it there.
All right, thank you. Moving on, student board member report, go ahead.
Okay, so, students' senate put on a very stellar homecoming week, we are now focusing on football concessions and the upcoming blood drive, which is on October 29, next Monday. It is held throughout the school day in the creasty lobby and open to all willing to donate. FFA has been really busy, as usual. Forty-seven members and chaperones traveled to Madison on October 2 for the World Dairy Expo. Mosne placed 26th overall and student Brenna Murray placed 31st individually out of 365 students. On October 3, officers traveled to Anigo High School for the sectional leadership workshop. Students learned about various leadership positions within their local FFA chapters and how to be effective leaders in those roles. Twelve members of FFA will be traveling to the national convention on October 24 through 27, so tomorrow. They'll be touring the Jelly Belly Factory and Apple Orchard Tractor Company and attending various workshops, conferences, and activities led by the national officer team, as well as going to the Garth Brooks concert.
I have a phone.
Vocal motion, this is really exciting, Mosne Concert Choir is currently raising funds in many different ways such as barter prize, promos, restaurant-sponsored nights, and also reaching out to local businesses for donations. If you know anybody, let me know. In March, we are scheduled to perform with other choirs as well as a solo set on the famous stage of Carnegie Hall in New York City. It's a massive honor and invitation extended to us based on years of exceptional reputation from past concert choirs. You know, we are fundraising because, like most once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, it is costly. We are also busting out rehearsals day in and day out in preparation for Disney's Newsies the Musical. We open November 1 and the finale is November 4. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the show starts at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, the 4th, is a matinee starting at 2:00 p.m. Okay, so SCC LA, the club recently began a soup fundraiser selling to Mosne faculty in an effort to donate a cooking, to a cooking school in Israel. They also attended a leadership conference on October 15 in Madison. FCA are current, is currently working toward districts beginning a syrup fundraiser in effort to raise funds to attend it. DECA is holding a food drive for non-perishables in place of their trick-or-can that they had done in the past, from October 29 to 31 to donate to a local food pantry. Chinese Club will be hosting an egg roll fundraiser for the teachers during the in-service on October 26. The Library Club recently hosted a space-themed art and poetry contest routine read week, awarding three high school students. They will also be hosting a scholastic book fair on Friday, November 30, and Saturday, December 1, in the high school IMC, from 7:30 to 3:30. This will take place during the Chambers Holiday Craft Show, as always. I'm, oh, sorry. M-Club is currently gathering students to attend a Badger hockey game on January 5. Fine Arts Club is designing props and sets for upcoming musicals, Newsies. Mosne Football secured second place in the GNC with a 5-1 conference record. The team finished 7-2 overall, earning a home playoff game this Friday, which is the first time since 2014. Mosne Boys Soccer secured second place in the GNC with a 7-3 conference record. The team finished 11-4-1 overall, earning the number one seed for their playoff, which entitles them to host the regional, or to host the regionals and sectionals. Mosne Cross Country has been having a great year with many first and second place invite finishes for both the boys and girls teams. The boys finished second in conference with the girls finishing fourth. Mosne Volleyball is once again the GNC champions for the second year in a row with an undefeated conference record. They have an impressive 33-6 overall record. Mosne Swim has been thriving with excitement serving 34 swimmers, sixth through 12th grade, in year one of launching these programs.
Thank you for throwing that in.
Thank you. And you need to practice.
Yes.
Do a practice.
Well, thank you, off the newsies.
Good job.
Please come, that'll be great.
Okay, moving on to item eight, old business, item eight A, discussion and possible decisions, school board's relationship with the Mosne Community Athletic Association. We did ask Mr. Gerro to come this evening, Bruce.
So the MCA is respectively requesting to take control of the complex and from the school district, we would also like to take control of the complex fund that's been established at the community foundation. As you may be aware of, a few years back, the school district requested control of the facility over there to work on the development of the, of the facility during the day-to-day operations and the National Guard were there. So, I think that's primarily why they wanted to take over, they thought they could do a better job than our, obviously, our part-time board that we have with the MCA. So, at this time, with no more guard work going on there, our MCA has kind of got back together, we've reorganized, recently held a meeting, we had over 10 people there, it's gonna continue to grow. Lot of, I think what we're trying to focus back on is getting back into more of the sports organizations that we did serve, we got a little too focused on this project alone. Although this project we are planning to complete, we want to do three more fields, we will be raising funds, we've done a lot of the fundraising for that facility there through grant work, so our next step, we do have grant money to build a football soccer field, and that work has started a little bit and will proceed in the spring. We also have electrical power coming into the complex, so they will no longer need to power up the scoreboard with a gas generator, so that's pretty exciting. I guess if you've got any other questions?
Okay, question. My understanding, though, is that some of the ongoing event support is done by our, our team here within the district?
Yep.
And will that continue?
That would continue for, just like any of your other activities, for instance soccer, when you're using your city soccer field, if you guys need to paint the lines perhaps for the field, need to do any kind of prep work to have an event, that would be, you know, obviously, our group is not gonna hold your event, so.
Gotcha.
Yep.
What about the, I'm glad to hear that we have appreciation of how many fields and what they are now.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. So, what about reoccurring maintenance for those, would that be the responsibility of, of the district?
So, what we're looking at doing, we don't know exactly who's gonna need those fields, but we're gonna be building them one by one. Mosne Youth Girl Softball has a huge need for fields. Last year, for instance, we held a 36-team tournament in the city Mosne here, and we didn't have enough fields, we had to put people over in Everest, in Everest School District. So, when we do build another field, most likely Mosne Youth Girl Softball would take care of that field and be the ones in control of that field. We would schedule the field similar to what we do now with the turf field, we would have a master calendar out there and then, you know, school would get priority during their seasons with, working with Mosne Youth Girl Softball. So whoever decides to build a field and help fund the field, they're the ones that are gonna be taking care of the maintenance on that field.
And does it plan to be all grassing, or just?
At this point, yes, unless you would like to donate some money towards that.
Good job. We're working on it.
Well, Kevin, just when we had met to, to plan for the agenda, one of the things we talked about too is we're gonna look at the lease that we have with the Little League, which has since expired many years ago that we were not aware of either, so we're gonna look at something similar to that, to bring back, propose to that. And then, John?
Again, being new to the district, when this was on my radar screen, we immediately brought it to the attention of the entire administrative team, including our activities director, we spent the last two Wednesdays or Thursdays, this was on our agenda, and I can share with the board that the administrators, Brent, everybody really supports the request to turn this back. Obviously, if you wanted to talk to our activities director, Zach is here, but part of our job is to bring you a recommendation, we would really support the recommendation, and a motion be passed, allowing Brent to sit down with whatever representatives exist from your organization, to put together the type of document that they think is acceptable, and then bring it back to the board for, for their approval. So at this point, we're not approving it, we're asking for a motion, if you support the idea, to have Brent get together and put something together.
This will be in the form of a lease, right? Yes.
I have a question for Steve, could you clarify that the Army National Guard is not coming back anymore in the future?
Well, I just spoke to him just two weeks back about that, because they're morphing from a vertical or horizontal vertical, and basically, I was told they kind of, basically moved 90% of their equipment, they don't have what they had to do the physical work anymore. And what he told me is, as they're being kind of realigned, so they have like a three-year window of just schooling, much further, their staff, where that's gonna take them, they really don't know. So, I guess, I feel like we were able to harvest that when they were here, and that's kind of where we sit right now.
Zach, do you want to weigh in a little bit on this as well?
Well, I think, I think what, what is being proposed from the MCA is probably the best direction. You have, I think, a resurgence of energy and passion and vision to see that momentum kicked back up on the field, and that way, the district doesn't have to be in a position where they would have to initiate any funding or direct responsibility of how that project is progressing, so.
Any other further discussion? If not, it would take a motion.
I will, so move that, move forward with Brent Zimmerman and the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mike and a second by Mark, further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion, school safety. There we are. Brady?
So, on Friday of this week, it's staff in service, right now where things sit, we are gonna, I'm gonna hold on Friday afternoon a meeting with the, the two staffs at those two buildings. Right now, the complex is farther along, they've made the decision to pool their resources to try to get the complex up and running, and then they're gonna move to the elementary school. We talked to them, last Thursday I talked to them, and they are probably about two weeks out right now, on getting the complex operational, then they move to the elementary school. And the three big things, just to remind you of what that looks like, is, one is secure entrances, it's what they call like a monitoring system on the doors, two is the, the fingerprint scanning, which is what's gonna control the, the influx of staff, and then three is a monitor that sits outside that allows the office staff to allow people into the building securely during the school day, so parents, you know, people dropping things off. So again, just to recap, our hope is within two to three weeks, we're operational, we're still obviously at the mercy of a company that's severely understaffed and overworked right now, but it's just, it is what it is, where, it's a good thing Brent's got a good relationship with him, so they still keep sending guys over to us.
And you figure, with all the money the state gave out, the safety grants, you know, they've got work coming out their ears.
He told me last week that they could hire 30 new guys, and he said, I would have them working tomorrow. If you have 30 people that can do a job, I can put them to work tomorrow.
Is there a third grant out there right now to Brent? For the safety grant? Is there another one out there, is it just?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, what they're going through now, they just sent something out to give a healthy reminder to people, 'cause I don't think everyone's.
I'll get it.
They have a buffer of 6 million that they're looking at, that's what's going on.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions? No? Okay, moving on. Item C, discussion and possible decision, how information is shared? Corey, this was Corey's.
I ask this agenda item because I think it's imperative that the, all board members receive the same information when making decisions. As we can see tonight, there's only three of us on the board that have computers open more than one occasion over the last year. I've found instances where the information on the computer was different from what was in the paper, it was different from what was put on to the screen. We, we made investment in computers so that it was easy for the administration, administrators to communicate with the board. We made that decision also to alleviate the cost for mailing, printing, all that kind of stuff, yet we don't, we don't utilize that. I just want consistency. Let's all go to all paper so that we can increase the school's expenses and increase the time that Amy has to deal with getting people their stuff, or we can all go to computers. I don't think it's good that we have varying degrees of information, it creates problems, in my opinion.
Okay, but if I believe correctly, this was on a previous board and you did vote, you were the only vote to carry on with the motion, the way we are receiving our information right now and technically should not have brought it back.
So you have it on the agenda?
Well, that's not, I guess then you will ask, have more clarification of what you're looking for, for future board, board meetings. So, we're gonna be, is there further discussion, otherwise we're moving on?
Nobody agrees, it's already been addressed, Tim Sandy and I have been on.
I was surprised to see it on the agenda.
I just wanted to look at the, play back the tape. Okay, item nine, new business, discussion and possible decision of the acceptance of the pool donation from Mr. and Mrs. Tomlinson?
I will so move, with the letter, thank you.
And if we can add, and just make sure that she's, we're using the money as they requested?
I will, and shall.
She wanted to earmark it for the pool, which was, this is her second donation?
Yeah, she's got ideas, yeah, for basically maybe some new lockers, and she's got other ideas that we're gonna be talking about.
And it was for the amount of?
Five thousand.
Yes, okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Brent's just taking care of that. Yep, thank you, Brent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8B, discussion and possible decision of the acceptance of the Knights of Columbus donation for special education.
Again, there's a dollar amount here that requires support of motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, is there a second? And a second by Jess.
As well as a letter sent.
Thank you. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9C, discussion and possible decision, approval of the spring 2019 Start College Now and Early College Credit Applications.
Well, we talked about this a little bit with the new policies, we have, instead of course options and youth options, we now have the Early College Credit Program, which allows students 9 through 12 to take one or more courses at an institution of higher education for high school and college credit. And Start College Now allows high school students grades 11 through 12 the opportunity to take one of their courses at a tech college. And what we do now is we only allow 18 credits total for these students, if you want to continue that, we talked about that with the new policy. On the second part, you can see up on the screen, those are the students, we had six this year that selected courses through either NTC or the UW system, and the total estimate is $6,617.08. What we continue to do is we add dual credit and AP courses so that the kids don't have to go to NTC or they don't have to go to UW school, they can take their classes at our school. Saving the kids a lot of money and saving our district money as well.
We have a motion by Corey, is there a second? And a second by Mark. I guess, just for our future, we can look in this, but it, I believe this is something we need to do from what John's saying, so it would just be more informative for the next time that comes through.
Yeah, it's not, yeah. Basically, I'm just sharing it with you, 'cause we have to prove it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good things need. Item D is discussion and possible decision of the recurring, recurring board agenda items, Amy was so great to put this together. Basically, this will also be on our website as well, but this kind of gives the board an idea of what we do every January, February, March, so you know what's coming up and can be more prepared. And then I believe you just shared this with all the administrators?
We shared with all the administrators in case there was something that we were missing or if it was in the wrong month. I know that we're, one of the things that they talked to me about is that perhaps we need to start talking about the summer school principal hire, normally January would be a time when that could occur, but because of the construction projects that are going on, Steve brought to my attention, this may be something that we need to talk about a bit earlier. Whoever is in that position has a lot of decisions to make, and waiting until January could probably be a, a major problem according to our principals and Steve. So, on a normal basis, January, number five, makes sense, but this might be a year where you hear from me a little bit earlier.
Can we have discussion?
Yep.
School report, I think, right? Argos is coming off soon, right?
Yeah, November 13 is the public release.
Okay. So, should we have a review of that, as the board, after it's been released?
Okay, just remember, this is just something we have to always do, but yes, it's not saying that this can't change.
Okay.
There's always fillers, but this is just so you know, this is something we, the board, it comes up annually every year at this time.
Well, that's an annual bill, too, right?
Okay, so it's something we can look at.
Sure.
Okay. We have a motion by Mike, is there a second?
A second.
And a second by Mark. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, but good idea, Kevin, someone can discuss it. Item 9E, discussion and possible decision, revisions to the Support Staff Handbook, section 4.7, seven, other leads.
Again, I asked that this be put on the agenda in the sense that, it's already been approached by our administrators that are indicating that we have a current problem with that policy, 4.7, basically, this isn't for certified staff, this is for your support staff. And as the policy currently states, employees can have up to three days off, and I'll page here, family-related matters, school activities, school-related activities. What it clearly states is such time off may not be used for vacation or recreation purposes. We do have some, perhaps, the principals might share, some of our support staff working less than three hours, four hours, are really asking if that's a policy where the recreation or vacation could be included. If we follow policy as it's written right now, the answer is no. Now, again, I'm new to the district, part of this is, sometimes you can look the other way, I prefer not to look the other way unless the board is telling me that's what we want to do. Steve, you might address it in terms of custodians, principals might address it in terms of what you're facing, but the bottom line is, at the end of tonight, I'm not looking to change anything right away, I'm trying to get direction. Do you want the administration to sit down and look at current policy, see if we can bring something back, that they include phrases like "once in a lifetime" opportunities, or if you're comfortable leaving it as it is, so be it, but before we do that, I think you should hear from Steve and maybe a couple of the principals, the challenges they're facing, if we follow the letter along with this board policy. Steve?
If I can interject for a second, you know, I'm gonna relate this really to my housekeeper. to my housekeeping staff. You know, we have a lot of three, four people, some five-hour people on my staff, and these are their second jobs. They have full-time jobs outside this, and they're going to take vacations when they take their vacation. So basically, it really ties my hands. We can afford letting those people take that time because they are going on vacation or they're just going to quit the job. So I guess I'm asking the board to have some consideration about that piece of the puzzle, because how do I handle that staff? Before, we had full-time people working, you know, and they were under eight hours and had their benefits of vacation, but these are second jobs for these people.
That's, is that part-time one at all?
Yeah.
Most likely.
So that's, I mean, it's quite honestly, yes, per schedule. You can schedule it out any way you want.
Well, the problem would be is if they're asking for a week or two off and they're going to leave for their job, it really boils down to unpaid time off for them, because they won't have vacation time off.
Oh, okay.
So the problem is they can.
They're, I'm in a different bucket.
I got you.
Right, so they're, they're going to go to a room before the week they're going, and what do you want me to do with those people? That's I'm asking for some some direction with that, because I have that issue with most of my staff. What do you do?
Yeah, we don't have any language for you to approve tonight. The question is, do we leave it as it is? Is it little school one, which was the library?
Well, we still, we do, I mean, we have a three-hour library assistant, and realistically, that's a tough position to fill, anybody who's going to work just a three-hour a day job. And we have a number of hourly jobs like that throughout throughout the district. And a lot of times, it's somebody who is going to say, well, if you're not going to grant me that time off, then I guess I just don't need to work here anymore. And in most cases, these are people that do a fantastic job for us, and if we feel that they're abusing that, we'll, we'll tell them, no, I don't think that this is a good idea. But if it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them to go, and it is a vacation or it's a recreation activity, we'd like to have the leeway to at least have the superintendent be able to say, yes, we'll grant it in this case.
So tonight, we're asking you, if you want to direct us to go back and look at that policy and bring possible revisions back to you, which you may choose to accept or reject, or you can tell us tonight, no, policy's fine, leave it alone. And then it's very clear what we have to say to those people that are asking, the answer will be no.
I'm okay with revising.
Second.
I guess.
We'd like to make it a more efficient.
I guess I could. I think a motion to have them revise it and bring it back. Yeah, bring it back.
Okay, so we have a motion by Amy and a second. Fine, Mark. Further discussion?
I don't have a problem with this. I feel some of, and it's not, I guess it's up to the administrators and how they want to do with that, just so they're careful that when you start granting certain people, you know, a week off and then somebody else, you know what you're looking at.
Right. And that's something we thought about too, Kelly.
Yeah. Okay.
I would, I would agree, revisions and then come back with more like days, how many